Good evening, everybody. Welcome everyone to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. My name is Lucinda Congreve and I am the Mayor of Brimbank, and I declare this meeting open at seven P M. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of the council officers and the emergency procedures that are on the wall near the door. I'd like to note that I've given approval for the journalists from the Brimbank Star Weekly and Channel thirty-one to audio and video record this meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify council officer should you have any concerns. Item number one is the acknowledgement of country, so can I ask everyone to stand, please? On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Warrentry people, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Thank you, please be seated. Councillors, can I ask you to remain standing for the council commitment? As the council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws, and we will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, we're on to item number three on the agenda, which is apologies and leave of absence. And I note that councillor Pepperfodio is on a leave of absence until the twenty-third of July two thousand and nineteen. I also have a recommendation in relation to approving a leave of absence for councillor duty chair. So councillors, is there a motion? Councillor Duty Chair, move councillor Headitch, as per the papers, seconded by councillor David. I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Vote for your own councillor duty chair. Okay. So we now move on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflicts of interest. And councillors, are there any conflicts of interest for disclosure this evening? No? Okay, so we'll move on to item number five, which is the designation of items as confidential. There are six items to be designated as confidential this evening, and please note the motion is different to the agenda papers. As reports, as the attachment to report twelve point twelve, local government power purchasing agreement are recommended to also be designated as confidential. So councillors, may I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Moved by councillor Duty Chair, seconded by councillor Fam, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, moving on to item number six, which is confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. And may I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meetings? Move councillor Borg. Thank you councillor Borg, seconded by councillor Tarkos. I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, moving on to item number seven, which is condolences, and there are no condolences this evening. Moving on to item number eight, which is congratulations, and there are no items of congratulations this evening. So we move straight on to item number nine, which is public question time. And Miss Flea, I understand we have received some questions from the public this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first question is from Deidre Sira. The question is, I'm a concerned resident and parent of a son who has autism. I recently be given a parking infringement notice for parking on a painted island. This is the first time I've ever picked up my son, who suffers from autism from Emma's primary school, in my car. My wife generally picks him up as I work during the day. That day I came fifteen or twenty minutes early to ensure that I had enough time to drive around and find a car park spot. I spent that whole time driving around and couldn't wait any longer as I have to meet my son before he goes into meltdown. The safest spot I could find to park my vehicle within ten to fifteen minutes walking distance was on that painted island. I actually went around looking for signs to understand if I am not allowed to park in that spot. I could not find any signs stating that you cannot park where I did in the car park. Quite clearly, there isn't enough car park spots to park within ten to fifteen minute walk of the primary school. I definitely do not want to park where I'm not allowed. The most disappointing thing is that the council is aware of this and has done nothing to fix this problem. Instead of revenue raising for young disadvantaged families, how about look at ways to improve the situation? If the council doesn't want to spend the money on something which should be of concern from a safety perspective, then how about providing some education on where to park and what to do in a situation where there are no car parks within reasonable walking distance? Why don't you have a parking inspector that stands in the car park and provides some guidance on what we can do? The council should be there for its residents and provide support and guidance to ensure that we all act within the law and in a safe manner. Handing out infringement notices when you clearly know that people are no other option is ethically and morally wrong. As such, I urge the council to review the situation and come up with a strategy to ensure there is enough parking and/or education on what we should be doing in the event we cannot locate a reasonable spot to park. I look forward to your response.
Thank you, Miss Flea. And thank you for your question. The council is aware of concerns with traffic and parking in high-demand areas such as schools, and is on that basis that we resolved to develop a parking strategy to assist in the provision and management of car parking across the municipality, especially car parking in high-demand areas such as activity centres, train stations and schools. It is anticipated that the final draft parking strategy will be considered by council in coming months. As you know, the Amanis Primary School has limited street franchise, which limits the amount of on-street parking available. Over the years, council officers have worked closely with the primary school and the neighbouring Catholic Regional College to address safety and parking issues. I've been advised that it is council officers' understanding that the primary school in question has a drop-off area within the school grounds for the morning peak and could possibly be operating in the afternoon peak times for pickup. I'd suggest contacting the school to check specific details which may assist you with your parking requirements. Finally, I can advise that council officers will be meeting with representatives of the school and the Catholic Regional College to review the parking conditions in Pexborough with a view to increase drop-off and pickup opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor. The next two questions are from Dr Kay Writer. The first question is, I moved here from Geelong within two weeks of arrival when asking my neighbours to quiet down the noisy conduct while offering them a bottle of wine and introduce myself as their neighbours, was near Bashtad and was admitted to Footscray Hospital, where I had two MRI scans, had to wear a neck brace, one X-ray and one C T scan before I could be released. I was punched in behind, stomped on and then dragged to my front door with my glasses broken. Having involved the Kielodans Police, who are still investigating the matter months later, and I'm still on strong killers, the soft tissue damage on my left foot and neck, both of which were stomped on by at least one male. Brimbank is deemed to be one of the top three most dangerous cities in Victoria, in which to reside according to Victoria Police and almost every website one can surf to research safety. I was in attendance at the meeting of the council on the twenty-fifth of June, and despite all sorts of announcements about tourism and how amazing Brimbank is, there was not one single mention of crime or what to do about it. Council is currently promoting its six hundred thousand dollar community grants programme and spending millions on all sorts of programmes, utterly ignoring that less than five hundred thousand dollars on one grant alone, let alone other waste within the budget, should all be prioritised to community safety or be handed back to the state government to assist with their need to overfund policing in this very dangerous city. Why is community safety not the number one issue for council and all councillors? What is council doing to reduce crime in Brimbank? And what are the council statistics on crime within Brimbank?
Thanks for your question, Mr Writer. So community safety is one of the priorities of Brimbank Council and is reflected in our council plan. Council has formally recognised community safety as a priority since two thousand and four with the introduction of the Integrated Community Safety Plan, two thousand and four to two thousand and nine, followed by the Community Safety Framework and Action Plan, two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen, and the Community Safety Strategy, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, which demonstrates Brimbank City Council's ongoing commitment to community safety. Community safety issues are complex and often stem from broader social and economic factors. This council recognises this and supports action to address these underlying causes. We also have a focus on creating quality urban environments that are safe, inviting and attractive. While council's role in community safety is important, it is heavily dependent on partnerships and collaborations with the police, all level of government, agencies and also members of the Brimbank community. Brimbank Council also has a safety roundtable, which includes Victoria Police, who has the prime responsibility for reducing crime. The safety roundtable includes a range of other stakeholders who together have a shared and integrated approach to crime prevention and promoting community safety. This includes actions such as proactive policing, community information, crime prevention through environmental design, CCTV, early intervention, crime statistic mapping and positive activation of public areas. In terms of the statistics on crime within Brimbank, Brimbank is trending in a similar way in crime data all over all the metropolitan north region over the last five years, with a decline in property and deception offences, a decline in drug-related offences and an increase in crimes against the person. More details are available on the Victorian Government's Crime Statistics Agency website.
Thank you. The last question from Dr Kay Writer is, over Easter, the rubbish collection dates were altered without any written notice to residents. This can cause trouble as robbers see houses with bins not having been collected as a meaning that the house is empty and people are likely away for the Easter break. On Monday, the twenty-fourth of June, roadworks were conducted on Bagley Crescent again without any written notice. Why does council not communicate to its residents when such things are about to occur, when council would clearly know about such events in advance itself?
Thanks again for your question, Dr Writer. The changes to the waste collection service resulting from a public holiday are an annual occurrence. These changes are communicated to residents through multiple communication channels, and this includes council's annual waste collection calendar that is distributed to every residential household within the municipality, advertising in the local newspaper, council's website, council's social media channels and council's on-hold phone messages. Residents can also check their waste collection days on council's website through the My Area profile affair to the website. In relation to the notification of roadworks, council provides advanced notification for major roadworks to affected residents via a letter drop. In the case of minor roadworks, such as footpath maintenance, as occurred in Bagley Crescent to Kings Park on the twenty-fourth of June, advanced notification is only provided to residential properties where access is being restricted. Thank you for your questions, Dr Writer. So that is the end of public question time today for those three questions. So we will now move on to item number ten, which is petitions, and there are no petitions to be received this evening. Item number eleven on the agenda relates to minutes reports of special committees, and there are no minutes or reports from special committee meetings this evening. So we move on to item number twelve, which is officer reports, and there are currently nineteen reports for consideration by council this evening. So we'll get straight into those reports. Now, the first item on the agenda, I think we have a few people in a gallery that might be interested in this, is relating to item twelve point one, which is home of football expression of interest. Can I ask Miss Brackett to briefly introduce this report?
Thank you, Chair. Football Victoria are releasing expression of interest process on the thirty-first of January this year to develop a facility to be the home base of the Australian female national team, the Matildas, and also act as the home of football for a range of other high-performance and community uses. The purpose of this report is to seek council's direction regarding the home of football expression of interest request for best offer to house a home of football. Football Victoria requires the best offer from short visit organisations by the twenty-sixth of July this year, so its business case can be completed and submitted to Sport and Rec Victoria in September two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Miss Brackett. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover? Councillor Allen.
Papers, please.
Thank you. Councillor Allen moving as printed in the business papers, is there a second for this item? Councillor Lancashire, the mover likes to speak to this item.
Yes, please. Councillor Pepperfodio is unable to be with us, but wished to express her support in the matter.
Councillor Headitch has raised a point of order. Councillor Headitch, what is your point of order relating to? Sorry, councillor Headitch, you'll need to point out a point of order as per the meeting code of conduct? Yes, but you need to point out a specific point of order. Okay, there's no point of order, continue, councillor Allen.
I as well express my support. There are three main areas of great benefit to Brimbank. There employment firstly, so there'll be additional employment generated during the construction of the proposed fifty to eighty million dollar facility. An estimated one hundred ongoing jobs will be created at the Football Victoria site. This may also provide employment and training pathways for Brimbank residents. Secondly, economic and tourism. The Home of Football project will generate additional spending in local businesses during the construction phase and ongoing via permanent employees. The project will result in additional media attention when the Matildas are located or attend the facility. The facility will bring regular visitors to the region and will result in additional spending at local businesses to support regular attendance. And thirdly, possible opportunities for Brimbank football clubs. The facility will provide opportunities for player and coach development. The facility will provide opportunities for elite player pathways without the need to travel distances, further support and development to our clubs. Now, in Brimbank, Sydenham Park is a target for this project, which aligns with our sports facility development plan and, of course, the council policy. This is an extraordinary opportunity to have a facility in Sydenham Park by two thousand and twenty-three. This project outlines eighty-six thousand square metres, which is eight point six five hectares out of the two hundred and thirty-one hectares of the total area of Sydenham Park. So the park requires, the project requires a total of only three point seven four percent of the total area of Sydenham Park. So Brimbank would still have control over ninety-six percent of Sydenham Park. Football Victoria is a non-for-profit organisation. There's a growing participation of football amongst girls and boys, and there is a great shortage of facilities that are being phased across the nation, of course. Last year, twelve and a half thousand girls and boys missed out on playing the sport of their choice. And in Victoria alone, up to four hundred and twenty ovals by two thousand and twenty-six will be required to keep up with the demand for this game due to population growth. If Brimbank is successful in this project, it will be able to provide a community approximately three thousand eight hundred lease hours of oval time, which is a great benefit to many of our sporting clubs. Overall, it'll provide a spotlight on Brimbank at a state level, a federal level and possibly internationally. This would contribute to an overall economic and social lift and possibly providing inspiration for many local Brimbank players, especially young girls and women. I support this, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. The second elect to speak, councillor Lancashire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the comments made by the previous speaker. Sydenham Park would make a great home for the Matildas. The Sydenham Park Strategy Plan adopted in May two thousand and four by Brimbank Council provides for sporting facilities to be located in this park. The proposal to locate the Matilda's home base in this park is in accordance with this policy. Sydenham Park, which is council's largest park, covers an area of two hundred and thirty-one hectares. The site requirements of the Matilda's, as indicated before, is less than four percent of the park. This proposal is a reasonable request. Sydenham Park is a truly amazing council park. It provides an incredible conservation, heritage, tourism, sporting and environmental opportunity for the people of Brimbank. From inside this park, you can see the city skyline, the airport, and looking down into the valley, you can see Wallabies roaming around. The park also includes Brimbank's only public golf course. Located a short drive away from Melbourne Airport, Sydenham Park has an amazing level of access. The entrance to this park is a sixty-five million dollar, which has been built some time ago, diamond interchange off the Calder Freeway, with its own bus stop, which is amazing for a council park to have that level of access. A divided road runs down the length of Brimbank into Sydenham Park. It would be difficult to find a park with such an incredible level of access to local residents, the western suburbs, Melbourne interstate or even international visitors. This is both a prestigious and appropriate location for our Matilda's. We as councillors have often talked about our concerns about childhood obesity and the need to encourage our children to get involved in sport, particularly the need to encourage women and girls into sport. Locating the Matilda's in Brimbank would be a massive encouragement to our young people to get involved in sport and in particular soccer. The opportunities provided by the array of training facilities proposed by this development would significantly benefit our local clubs and the sports men and women of Brimbank. This development will include between fifty and eighty million dollars worth of construction work, which would be a boost to local employment with over a hundred permanent jobs. However, we understand that these type of development opportunities have a significant economic multiplier effect that would result in significantly increasing employment in hospitality, retail, accommodation and tourism within Brimbank and throughout the western suburbs. Brimbank has a lot of very keen soccer supporters. I know that these supporters would be thrilled to see the Matilda's located within Brimbank. It would be a significant boost to soccer in this municipality, and as a brand recognition, it will greatly increase our ability to advocate for residents on a whole range of issues.
Councillor Lancashire, do you need some more time?
I've got about one sentence, so another fifteen seconds. In conclusion, I believe this proposal is an incredible opportunity for Brimbank, our residents, our sportsmen and women, and in particular, our children. I strongly encourage my fellow councillors to support this motion. Go the Matilda's!
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillors, is there any further discussion on this item? Any further speakers? Councillor Headitch, I saw you first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm not going to speak for this particular motion for a number of reasons. I do support sport and I do support activity, no doubt about that. But I think in this one, council finally as a group is getting a chance to make a decision and to hear for the first time since this announcement that an expression of interest was made in March in the Star Weekly. It's the first time that it's come to councillors for a conversation and a decision. So I guess for me, there's a whole lot of work that's gone on. There's been no mention of this as a priority project in any council plan, in any budget. There's been no endorsement of any strategic assessment, yet tonight we're being asked as a council to consider an officer recommendation to continue on with the E O I process when we've had no consultation at all with the Warrentry people, who are the original owners of this land. We've had, I guess, no decision made yet at all on the future of Sydenham Park, yet here we are talking about Sydenham Park being the home for the Matilda's. How do we get in front of ourselves like this? It's a real challenge for me. I think, first of all, you need to know that you've got a site, and how can we perceive an expression of interest without knowing that we've got a site? I think it's not a fair and reasonable thing to do to anyone. The Waterways of the West project's underway at the moment too. We're having a look at the rivers and the grasslands surrounding the Mary of an Ong and Wurby rivers, and Sydenham Park's part of that. And we haven't put the Sydenham Park input into that process at all yet, yet here we are talking about putting forward an E O I for Sydenham Park to be the home of the Matilda's. We also have, in my mind, no clear benefits stated, despite what's been said previously about the benefits of the Brimbank community. What are they? We're also looking for a whole range of, I guess, opportunities for local kids to get into sport, for improvement to facilities, for sport and rec, for swimming, for libraries, for neighbourhood houses, for all sorts of things. We need local opportunities for local people. This is principally an elite training facility with some local connection. I don't see that this is a really strong fit for Brimbank at all at the moment, given the site location and the status of the final decision on the site use.
Councillor Headitch, sorry, do you need some more time?
I do need a little bit more time.
Extension for two minutes, thank you.
The other part of this is the council has severe limitations on its budget. We know that we have a range of different projects that we need to consider over the coming months and years. We have a Norbert's Leisure Centre and we have a range of other major projects in the pipeline. To be putting forward an E O I proposal, which undoubtedly doesn't have any significant capital contribution identified in it at the moment, but signals the council's willing to continue on with a whole range of activity that will have costs associated with it. We don't have a place for a whole range of other projects in this community, but we're trying to make space for this one. This particular initiative has no priority at all in any council policy or strategy, the project as it's being described. And it's highly likely, highly unlikely, I should say, that council could even go near meeting the two thousand and twenty-three deadline that Football Victoria is putting on, putting on this particular one. So for me, there are many higher local priorities, such as libraries, parks, roads, neighbourhood houses, sports facilities, that will produce benefits for Brimbank residents. So I therefore cannot support this recommendation and foreshadow that in the future putting forward a NOM to basically have a look at how we do strategic assessments in this council. That this has got to this stage without there being any sign off by council at all of all the work that's gone on today. And here we sit today, I think, bears some conversation back at the council table. But for me, there are many higher local priorities and that we should be focused on them at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Is there any other speakers for or against this item? Councillor Tarkos?
I take on board what councillor Headitch said, but I think on a whole, this recommendation is a balanced one in that it's saying that it's factoring in the assessments that still need to be made for the native flora and fauna, as well as the cultural heritage that obviously needs to be done well before we consider it. We all know that Sydenham Park presents some of the most pristine and unique environmental panoramas and is also home to unique fauna and flora that is yet to be fully and properly mapped. The land that is being considered for this offer is also bordered by the Kewalk Public Golf Course that is owned by Brimbank Council but leased to Belgravia. Any changes or construction will have impact on this golf course and would require it to possibly move. Again, there needs to be consultation, a close consultation about this because they are contracted there, and we know for a fact that some excellent programs are run out of that golf course, and especially for children of all abilities. I think the best offer should be made, but with these considerations highly playing in the background and also consideration given to the framework with which this council operates on the sports facilities plan, which also sets out the priorities that this council has considered for a raft of upgrades to our grassroots clubs across Brimbank. Clearly, Brimbank has a lot to offer, we love our sports. However, not at the expense of our sports facilities capital works plan. We have made a commitment to our grassroots clubs to deliver long overdue upgrades and facilities that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillors, is there any further discussion on this item? Councillor Duty Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I will be supporting the recommendation and making some qualifications. Now, while I do agree with most of what the other councillors have said, in point one, Sydenham Park has sufficient space to accommodate Football Victoria land requirements. However, the native flora and fauna and cultural heritage assessments are required. These assessments are required anyway before we finalise the Sydenham Park master plan. That has not come to council yet. The idea is that it would fit sporting grounds, but again, that has not been signed off on. However, they would need to be done anyway. The relocation of any golf holes, I agree with councillor Tarkos. We do have a contract with the people looking after our golf club at the moment, and I don't think the council would be in a position to actually fund the changing of those golf holes or the reduction in the golf holes. So I do agree that Football Victoria should be funding that. Council offering a lease of up to fifty years, I think the community would definitely need to be consulted on that. We did have a number of sports clubs coming to present to Sydenham Park at the committee, and I understand that a couple of other sports clubs are also interested in having land there at that facility at Sydenham Park. So I think it would be well within the community's interest to come along. Apart from the sporting clubs, we also have a lot of environmentalists who are interested in Sydenham Park. So definitely the community will be on board with that consultation process. Rent, well, that's been assessed against our own policy, so that's definitely a point to be supported. And not providing any capital or ongoing operational funds, well, that's definitely something that I support as well. As some of the other councillors have mentioned, we do have our own capital works projects ten years in advance. Our own sporting clubs are also in dire need of some capital works. So providing any capital to a group who already has significant sponsorship and should really be backed by state and federal governments, I think, is definitely something that I would be looking for from this council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Duty Chair. Councillors, is there any further discussion on this item? No? Councillor Allen is a mover, and as someone spoke against your item, you had the right of reply.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to support, um, what is being said. Uh, councillor Headitch, you mentioned that there's been no, uh, consultation, uh, done with, um, you know, uh, Aboriginal indigenous, uh, land ownership. But the recommendation does clearly mention that that would be done later. Um, secondly, I wanted to mention that it does align with our sports facility development plan, um, because it does talk about giving residents, um, the best opportunities for any kind of sporting. And I believe that that falls within that because by having more sports facilities in Brimbank, there's obviously a community benefit there. Um, secondly, um, I don't think it'll be strained on our facilities. Um, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. And, um, that previously mentioned, that this Sydney Park is the only land that they're interested in. So by saying no to this land in Sydney Park, you're essentially saying no, we're not going to have the Matildas here. And it's really important to mention that at the end of this, we still have the opportunity. This is not a locked in contract kind of thing. Once we do this, we go to them and they go through the tender process. We still have the option, once we do our consultation and, um, and, you know, our assessments, we still have the option to say, you know what, doesn't work for us. But by saying no to this, um, to this item, you're closing the door to that. So that's it.
Thank you councillor Allen. That concludes debate. So I will put this to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Carried. Councillors, councillor Langashir has called a division. I will ask you all to, um, stand when I call the vote and when I call your name, you may be seated. So all those in favour, please stand. Councillor Fan, councillor Langashir, councillor David, councillor Trung, councillor Allen, councillor Tarkos, councillor Judy Chair, councillor Congreve. All those against, please stand. Councillor Headitch and councillor Borg, the motion is carried. Thank you. So members of the gallery, that is, that item done. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave should you not have any further interest in this evening's proceeding. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point two, which is planning activity update and delegate decisions, June two thousand and nineteen. Count, uh, I'll ask, uh, Mr Walsh to please introduce this report.
Thank you, madam mayor. The purpose of this report is to present to council the status of planning permit applications and trends in planning approvals in Brimbank. And also to present decisions made under delegated authority in June twenty nineteen regarding planning permit applications and other matters. These matters are outlined in the attachments to the report and council is asked to note the activity.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Langashir?
Thank you, madam mayor. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillors, is there a seconder for this item? Councillor Judy Chair, seconded. Councillor Langashir, would you like to speak for this item? No? Does the seconder like to speak? No? Any further discussion on this item, councillors? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we now move on to item twelve point three, which is planning compliance activity update, one April to thirty, June two thousand and nineteen. Mr Walsh, may I ask you to please introduce this item?
Thank you again, madam mayor. The purpose is to present to council the planning compliance activity, uh, for the period of first of April to Ju-, uh, thirtieth of June twenty nineteen. And councillor asks to note the activity.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Tarkos, moving.
Per business papers, thank you.
Thank you, seconder. Councillor Langashir, would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Tarkos?
Uh, madam, just, uh, whilst there's been a slight decrease on the volume of requests, uh, from the last quarter in the compliance report, I noticed that there has been a spike in the reports of unauthorized signage. And accounting for that is fifteen percent of the rec- four hundred and sixty-one requests received has been of, uh, illegal, um, unauthorized signage. Uh, I guess mine is a question as well. Is, is it possible to find out where the contraventions are taking place in Brimbank? And are they being concentrated in an area? Thank you.
Mr Walsh, you are able to answer that. No, that's okay. Question? Or do you want to take that on notice? Sorry, microphone, Mr Walsh.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Uh, councillors will note there is an attachment to the report that provides a map where various activity is, uh, occurring across the, uh, across the municipality. Um, uh, I was just looking to see whether the specific issue of signage is covered within that attachment and councillors are directed to the attachment, uh, for that information.
Can you miss Walsh? Councillor Tarkos?
Very, very happy with that response and, um, overall, it's pleasing to see that there's, there's a trend that it's decre- the compliance, um, reports are decreasing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Councillor Langashir, would you like to speak as a seconder on this item? No? Councillors, is there any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item twelve point four, which is the monthly governance report. And I will ask Mr Hogan to please introduce this report. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh, the monthly governance report is a standing item within the council agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles and in compliance with the Local Government Act of nineteen eighty-nine.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? Sorry, I'm looking at councillor Judy Chair. Um, is there a mover of the motion, councillor Judy Chair? Thank you councillor Judy Chair. Is there a seconder? Councillor Fan, councillor Judy Chair, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, madam mayor. I was trying not to laugh because I knew you were anticipating that I was going to move that motion. Thank you, uh, madam mayor. Um, uh, the monthly governance report, uh, falls under my portfolio, which is innovation. And I'm very pleased to report that councillors once again have been extremely busy, um, with their portfolios and various committees. And I wish to actually mention one committee in particular, the Collective Action Committee. Um, councillor Borg, councillor Bakfaria and myself actually sit on this committee. And I must say that it's coming along very, very nicely indeed. And I would suspect that in the next couple of months, we will be giving a bigger report to council and a briefing on exactly what's happening at that committee. And I wish to officially thank all of the council staff that sit on that committee. And also, of course, the wonderful, uh, people, the community people that sit on that committee. We're doing some wonderful work and we're getting ready for a very exciting project. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. Councillor Fan, would you like to speak to this item? No? Any, any further discussion, councillors, on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point five, which is Local Government Bill two thousand and nineteen reforms. And Mr Hogan, I'll ask that you please introduce this re- item as well.
Thank you again, madam mayor. This report seeks council's response to a specific and limited series of reforms to the Local Government Act of nineteen eighty-nine, very recently proposed by the state government of Victoria.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Is there a mover of the motion? Councillor Judy Chair?
I move, madam mayor.
Thank you. Is there a seconder for this item? Councillor Tarkos? And would the mover like to speak to this item?
Just simply, madam mayor, I've just made a couple of notes, just reading through the Local Government, um, the Local Government Act Bill Reform. Um, the simplified franchise, that's okay. Um, single wards, a number of questions. How will it be done? How many residents are going to be in each ward? Um, it's a major shift from previous thinking of what the state government and the community are thinking as well. Councillor training, I definitely support that. In fact, I've been advocating for that for quite some time. Donation, um, transparency is good in local government. Um, I do support the submission that the council is making. And hearing in the traps, along the traps and talking to other councillors from other municipalities, there are a whole lot of questions that are being raised about why all of a sudden with the change of ministry, has there been such a big change in the reform of the Local Government Act? So it will be interesting to see when all the submissions come in, how the minister does actually react to all of the different submissions coming in. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. Would the seconder like to speak? Councillor Tarkos? Just to echo, uh, what was said by, by councillor Judy Chair, but my concern is around the single member wards, um, under the electoral structures. Uh, what, I guess when one is elected to council, I appreciate that we are, are elected as ward council, uh, under a ward, uh, system. However, uh, when we become councillors, we are strong advocates not only for the issues pertaining to our ward, but we are elected to represent the whole of Brimbank. My, um, concern is that single member, uh, wards create demarcation and division. I think single member wards draws boundaries and in not in the spirit of working and sharing the work across the wards and familiarisation with issues across the wards as well. It has been the case also if a ward councillor might be away or on leave, there is another councillor that is across the issues that can keep supporting. It is an issue that's been brought up to me also by the community. Uh, they are very concerned about any change in this, uh, structure. They feel that, uh, they get to know what councillors, but also they feel that it's share, it's a shared responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh, I just wanted to talk about electoral structures too, that, uh, count, I agree with council in the proposal to amend the electoral structures. Uh, there's been a lot of evidence and a lot of examples of where, uh, single ward councils have gone wrong. Uh, we've, we've had, uh, the Geelong Council sacked. Uh, we've had, uh, all sorts of, you know, uh, decisions made on a ward basis that, uh, really, uh, I guess, worked against the spirit of local government and the, uh, the community first approach that we, uh, we want to take all the time. For me also, there seems to be a lot of evidence that, uh, we shouldn't be going down this pathway. But there seems to be a bit of a political driver behind this that, uh, people are talking about quite openly. Uh, I, I don't think anyone supports, uh, trying to wipe out independent and various other councillors, uh, through, uh, through big parties, getting, uh, control of councils and so on. So for me, I fully support council, uh, not supporting the proposal to amend the electoral structures.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Any further discussion on this item? Councillor Borg? Councillor Borg, just, um, fix up your microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. This is the first comprehensive review of the Local Government Act in a quarter of a century. This bill is proposing significant changes to how councils are governed and the legislative framework. Um, in the ministerial forward, in the document Local Government Bill Reform Proposal, the honourable Adam, um, Somu, a member of parliament states that the new bill has been developed through rigorous consultation with the community, councils and big bodies and builds on the reforms presented in two thousand and eighteen. In spite of this, according to the, um, Municipal Association, um, of Victoria, Members Brief, some proposed reforms lacked previous discussions or consultation. There is also limited information available about the proposed reforms. Um, like my fellow councillor, I am also concerned about the single ward structure that is being proposed. There are seventy-nine unique councils in Victoria. Flexibility in electoral structure is needed to effectively respond to local needs. So once again, I will be looking forward to this submission and the outcome of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Borg. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Trung?
Thank you, madam mayor. Sorry. Um, I just, uh, support with added counsel mention, but I give, um, um, question about is like we have the multi, uh, ethnic community. It's a single, uh, councillor in a war. It's very hard to do. I think it's the, we need to consider about the issue because I think single councillor is not really helpful for it more if they have in the future.
Thank you. No, no. Thank you councillor Trung. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Sorry? Okay, would you like that noted? Okay, can we please note, uh, councillor David as a, um, against, voting against that item? Okay, councillors, um, as I'd like to speak to the next two items, is there a mover of a procedural motion to appoint the deputy mayor as a temperature chair of the council meeting for the consideration of item twelve point six advocacy priorities update and twelve point seven Melbourne Regional Landfill V C A T Tribunal Decision? Councillors, there's procedural motion. Councillor Langashir? Thank you, seconded by councillor Judy Chair. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Welcome councillor David.
Yeah, thank you councillors. Um, may I ask, um, director Hogan to please put this? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider and adopt updated advocacy priorities.
Thank you for that. Any questions, councillors? No? So we proceed. Yeah.
Mr Deputy Mayor, I'd like to move a motion.
Yes. Um, well, the motion please, can you?
Yes, can I please, uh, move the motion as printed in the business papers? Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone second that? Councillor, um, uh, Tarkus? Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Um, and I just need to say I may need some additional time. So councillors, I appreciate that this is one of many times this year that we have stood to discuss our advocacy priorities. In fact, it was only a cou- couple of months ago that we were here talking about these. And, um, the reason we're doing it again is there's been a few things happened since then, including a state and a federal election. So it was timely that we had a look at what we were doing and made sure we were on top of it. So the purpose of this refresh is to track our achievements, of which there are many, and you can read through the report to see those and to refresh again in the wake of the elections that we've had. Now, I do need to be clear that our, um, priorities in terms of advocacy topics remain the same, but we're simply shifting gear in terms of reframing some of them and moving some of them up and some of them down and, and around in terms of our, our new needs. First and foremost, um, is a priority that we are now actually calling Brimbank Transformation. And that's because that is exactly what this is. This is leveraging transformational change that sun- that the Sunshine Super Hub is bringing to the municipality and for the good of our whole community. So it makes sense that Brimbank Transformation is number one on our advocacy agenda. The transformation is this council's once in a generation opportunity to break the neck of intergenerational unemployment and disadvantage by skilling up loc- our localised workforce to deliver our key infrastructure projects. Strategic sites and investment are also gold, including the Western Rail Plan, Melbourne Airport Rail Link, the Sunshine Priority Ple- Precinct, which will see the development of Sunshine. And we know that Sunshine will look very, very different in ten years' time. We also have the North West City Deal on the table. We're not sure if this will be a river of gold. It may be like that that we've seen in Geelong and other areas, or it may not be. But we need to make sure that we're doing our damnedest to get as much of that gold or any that is available. And we've also had some updates on that, uh, recently that we have managed to secure a meeting with the minister, Alan Tudge, who is responsible for the North West City Deal. So we're meeting with him in the next few weeks. A new phrase for us, um, and a new silver priority is the concept of environmental equity. And everyone in this room knows that Brin- our Brimbank community bear the brunt of a larger and unfair share of the harmful effects of pollution and environmental hazards that other municipalities in, in Victoria don't have. And this includes landfills and former landfills, chemical factories, former munitions plants like those in Kenley. And this is why we are highlighting that under this new silver or second level priority is this whole concept of environmental equity. On the concept of environmental equity, I would like to take a moment for our- On the concept of environmental equity, I would like to take a moment for us to talk about Stony Creek. For those of you who might not be aware of what Stony Creek is, this is a project that will will turn an existing concrete jane drain back into a natural state. It will, always planned to, become a vibrant community space for everyone to enjoy with walking paths, wetlands and a re-vegetated creek bed. The project covers a large area of about one point two kilometres of, of upper Stony Creek and eight point five hectares of land. As part of the transformation, more than eighty thousand cubic metres of soil needs to be removed. This equates to nearly eight thousand truckloads or thirty-two Olympic-sized rainfalls. In addition to renaturalising the creek, the project also creates a wetland and space for recreation. The Stony Creek Revitalisation Project has been a beacon of hope for the West. A transformational project for Melbourne's West, in fact a project that was destined to be a first in the southern hemisphere. The project was destined to create a natural cool zone through a network of pumps that could be activated on hot days for neighbouring communities, which would naturally cool the environment, our communities. Some, in fact, some of our most vulnerable communities, who we all know in this room disproportionately feel the impact of climate change and are particularly vulnerable to heat. This site was set to be a refuge for those communities. As with many projects in Brimbank, shortly after breaking ground, it was discovered that the site was contaminated. The project originally funded through a partnership of all three levels of government, Melbourne Water, City West Water, Development Victoria, Green Fleet. The original funding was eleven million dollars or just over and the remediation works. Sorry, can I?
Would you like an extension of time? Thank you, bye.
Thank you. The remediation works now put the total of up to seventeen million dollars, with six million dollars required in the remediation. And I'm sorry to say that right now, as we stand, the work on that site has stopped. Right now, that site, which we had such hope for, is now a hole in the ground, surrounded by temporary fencing and abandoned due to funding issues. In what is quickly becoming an issue of environmental injustice for the West, the project requires a further four million dollars from the Victorian Government in addition to the one point nine million, which was already committed by the other funding partners. I have to commend the fu- funding partners of this project for going back to their respective businesses and seeking additional money to put towards this much-needed project in our community. They've come to the table. I'm working very, very hard through our local members, including Natalie Sawyerman, Ingrid Stitt, Catherine Cumming and the federal member Daniel Malino, to secure the additional funding that we need, this community needs, those vulnerable communities need to finish this project. And to make sure that we deliver this for their, our community. We're also in constant discussion and have had multiple conversations now with the Minister Environment's Office, Office Livdan Brozio, who is committed to trying to find the money to finalise this project. So we will continue to advocate very, very strongly in this regard. So now I've diverted onto Stony Creek. I'll go back to other priorities, which are still many. Sports and facilities are on the list and we know, as we've had this discussion earlier in the council meeting, that there is an unmet need for active recreation facilities, um including cricket, football, netball, soccer and tennis. We also want a new regional sporting facility in Brimbank, similar to what Wyndham has in Eagle Stadium, and this will be one of our priorities into the future. We also know that education is key and we are committed to securing our share of the four hundred and seventy-three million dollars that has been committed by the state government to expand and commu- uh improve our kinder facilities. And of course, um there are many, many more. I could keep talking all day on this issue, but I won't. I'll leave it there and I strongly commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mayor. Uh councillor Tarkus, would you like to speak on this?
Uh I, I, I guess uh that was, most of my notes have been covered, which is fantastic to see the, the strong advocacy that we've um i- in our refresh come up with. Um I, I'm so glad that unemployment and jobs has become a gold priority for all councillors. I think with all the transformation that we're undergoing, with all the infrastructure projects, uh is really important that we advocate strongly at this point. Um the most important item that I, I feel is environmental equity. Um I think this is a big one for Brimbank and one that um needs extremely strong advocacy campaign behind it. Uh with the recent developments of the landfill expansion, uh as um the mayor said, legacy contamination, PFAS contamination, and now the prospect also of a possible north-south flight path that may create noise impacts for the whole of Brimbank, it is time for our community uh to call for accountability uh around the impacts of polluters, whether it be air, land, water. Our community should not be perceived as a dumping ground or a carrier for Victoria's waste, noise and our rivers and creeks, used as industrial drains for chemicals and PFAS. This council is committed in taking advocacy to the next level, particularly with the St- Stony Creek um proposed project. Um and we're taking this seriously. Environmental equity means that whilst we embrace growth, the impacts need to be addressed and offset and impacts mitigated so that for our community, they feel safe and for future generations to get to enjoy their amenity in safety. I thank the mayor for her efforts to continue the fight for Stony Creek funding, but also generally that people in the West are treated as equal citizens. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkus. Any other comments, councillors? Councillor, thank you.
Um I'm, I'm glad to see that ed- education is um in our priority um advocacy item as well. I think added to, to with climate change or waste or um any other issue in Brimbank need to start with education. Um because just through my own experience that if without knowing more about issue that we have or without even getting a chance to, to get told about what's happening now, I wouldn't be in even be able to, to know what advocate for. So that's why I think education is the first key as well to uh to um raise awareness within our community and combine all the community voice together with us to, you know, putting our top priority in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Farm. Any other, any discussions? No? Councillor, councillor Headitch? Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I guess I wanted to support what councillor Congreve and other councillors have said so far. Um I too, I think the, the outcome at Stony Creek is an appalling one. Uh we've had community consultations with Development Victoria on the block of land on St Albans Road that had on that uh site plan a, a lovely redeveloped creek going right alongside the uh new development plan that we signed up on recently. Uh now we find that not even stage one can be completed and that there are no funds available anywhere to complete it. We have legacy issues galore in this city. Uh I look at the gold, silver and bronze categories and all it's, all that comes out of me is catch-up. We have a problem with unemployment and jobs. We need catch-up. We have a problem with environmental equity across a whole range of fronts. We need catch-up. We have sports and community facilities, one of the lowest levels in the state. We need catch-up. We have education and training. Uh we have all these reports that tell us that we need to be catching up in education, health and jobs. We're talking about kindergarten funding, but we also need to be talking about primary school funding, secondary school funding and tertiary funding. Uh they all come together. They are enablers of un- of improving unemployment and jobs outcomes. Uh environmental equity is an enabler of improving a whole range of health and, and wellbeing outcomes and so on. So I support all that's been said, but I, I go to the core of it. Uh this community is, has been left with so many legacies. Legacies of the wrong kind and we need to be a really strong advocate. We need to think about our advocacy strategies and be really powerful with them. Uh I don't think that we can stand back and, and just nod and, and do whatever. We need to get out there as the mayor is doing and as councillor Tarkos is doing and as the officers are doing, but we need to do it in a, in a stronger and better way, continuously improving way all the time because of the amount of of issues in this community and the amount of work that's needed around advocacy. So I commend the report. I think it's our, our first attempt to simplify it down and, and whatever. We can argue the toss around a whole range of things, but for today and for now, this is what we've decided on. Business transformation is huge for Brimbank. It is a big, big ticket item. I think what we need to do for community benefit and to stakeholder benefit is to flesh this out. What do we mean? What are our asks around unemployment and jobs? Does it mean industry development and business development? What does it, what does it actually mean? So we need to go into it and flesh it out so people can understand it and come with us on the ride. Thank you very much. Commended to councillors.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Uh any other comments, councillor Georgie?
Thank you, um Mister Deputy. Um it's certainly great to see some, some schools on the board for our advocacy so far, Mister Deputy. And I do agree, of course, uh with what councillor Colvery, Headitch, Tarkos and Farm have also said. But I wish to highlight a couple of things. The fact that the mall was introduced and endorsed by state and federal governments will mean so much for Sunshine, Brimbank and the West with new jobs, training opportunities as well as investment. A seat at the table is essential and I'm very, very pleased that a reference group will be, will be formed to engage local government and business on this issue. The Integrated West Transport Plan is very welcome indeed, um councillor David. And I think you and I attended all of those consultations some ten years or more so ago. I can't believe that this is still on the agenda and it's still to be finalised. But anyway, it's good to see it still on the agenda, I suppose. Of course, sunshine being announced as a priority precinct is also a welcome announcement. Fifty million dollars for the Call the Freeway upgrade, very welcome indeed. One very, very important uh initiative for me is the three-year-old kinder investment for our most precious members of the community, our children. There is still a lot of work to be done to increase capacity in our kinders and I'm so very glad that we'll also now put that on our kindergarten, on our advocacy campaign as well. Of course, we thank the state and federal governments for all of their initiatives, but will continue as a council to advocate for our gold, silver and bronze initiatives here. They are all, in my mind, equally as important as each other. It's just that we happen to put them in some order. Of course, it would be needless to say that we will still continue to advocate for funding for our Silverman's Leisure Centre, even though it's been downgraded to silver, but I don't think we're going to stop the advocacy on that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Georgie Chair. Any other comments, councillors? Councillor Trum, yes, thank you.
I just fully support for all other councillor is the mention. It's, it's uh and but I nothing and I think we um the local government, the state government, we have to working together and also to support, to encourage and um education and get a more member in the community to get involved. And we have to petition to working. It's just not only talking and have the land there, but not in action. And we, we want to see the result from all the thing um we want to achieve it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trum. All done? No other comments? If not, councillor, um the mayor, councillor Congreve moved, seconded by councillor Tarkus. I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Non-musically carried. Uh next slide, councillors, is item twelve point seven. This is to do with the Melbourne Regional Landfill, Victoria Civil Administration Tribunal Decision. I just wonder if I can ask um director Kelvin Walsh those. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mister Deputy Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to note uh this report is a public record of its decision to not seek leave to appeal to the Supreme Court in relation to VCAT's decision on the eighteenth of June uh twenty nineteen to uphold the EPA's decision to expand uh the Melbourne Regional Landfill, uh the works approval. Um the council is asked to note this report as the public record of its decision um and to undertake a range of uh advocacy actions as detailed in the recommendation.
Thank you, Mister Walsh. Any questions to the director at all? No? Anyone? We got a, no? Councillor Headitch? You move the amendment motion? Yes. Would someone second the amendment? No? All the members, yeah, please.
Uh we have the original motion before us that we include a new item B. That notes council's intention to strongly advocate to protect amenity, livability and health and well-being outcomes by undertaking the following activities outlined below. Um this, this point has gone in, I'll talk to it later. That, so that's point B. In point C, we add the words rights to the Environment Protection Party Chief Executive Officer seeking formal confirmation that the organisation intends to fulfil its responsibility to proactively regulate compliance of expanded Ravenhill chip operations and the current operator Lancel operations proprietary in accordance with the conditions of its licence. And that the EPA, one, convenes a monitoring group consisting of local government stakeholders and community and industry representatives to receive regular quarterly operational performance reports against the works licence, including odour, dust, soil, groundwater and litter management and transport to and from the site. Makes public the reporting against works licence performance, including odour, soil, dust, groundwater and litter management and transport to and from the site. Makes public information on the volume, classification and management of receipt of contaminated soil and its preventive treatment and management. And four, makes available the resources essential to regulating and monitoring compliance at Melbourne and the southern hemisphere's largest landfill site in the community's interest. They are the changes. Uh the rest of it is as per the papers.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Before I ask for a second, uh it's just the councillors to clarify this. We, um the amendment put forward by councillor Headitch is B, C, one, two, three and four. Can I have a second, please? Councillor, councillor Congreve, would you like to speak on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh Deputy Mayor. This particular uh motion is a really important one to put on the record, uh the decision of council as uh as Director Walsh has said. Uh the changes that have been made uh following the special council meeting the other, the other day are, are put in place uh to, I guess, identify that in B, in point B, that council in making its decision uh not to seek leave to appeal to the Supreme Court, also uh made a decision to strong, continue to strongly advocate to protect amenity, livability and health and wellbeing outcomes by undertaking a variety of activities. So uh I guess the point of this uh particular change is to make sure that the community is aware that despite not seeking leave to appeal, the council intends to strongly advocate on its behalf on a whole range of fronts going forward. In point C, the changes that have been put forward uh really do seek to make sure that the this huge tip, this huge landfill, uh biggest in the southern hemisphere, one that has potentially a whole range of issues to flow from it over decades, that we do have a responsible EPA proactively regulating and uh monitoring compliance at the expanded tip. And that we put in place mechanisms to ensure that the community is fully aware of what's going on inside that tip. We have uh particular monitoring groups down at Brooklyn, for example. We have the Brooklyn Community Reference Group that EPA convenes and meets quarterly and brings a whole range of information about what's going on in Brooklyn and compliance with dust and odour and various other problems there uh on a regular quarterly basis and has conversations with industry and community about that. Uh it's a very, very helpful and uh worthwhile uh monitoring group and we, we believe uh that this particular uh Ravenhall tip, being the largest landfill tip in the southern hemisphere and eventually Melbourne's major tip, uh does need something of that significance, if not more uh going forward. That we do need to put a really strong uh governance mechanism around the operations of this tip and that the community needs to be actively involved in that. In point two, we, um and points two, three and four, they are all about making public uh reporting, public information and making sure uh eventually, uh so that's two and three, sorry. Uh making sure the reporting against the work licence performance around odour. We know the problems with odour. We know the problems with soil that can come from contaminated soil blowing around. We know the problems that come with dust. We know the problems that come from groundwater and leaching into groundwater and litter management. We've seen them all around the site and we've seen a whole range of issues of late of long two-kilometre queues of trucks uh going into the, into the site. We understand that the trucks in the future will be working at night, twenty-four, seven, so we're going to have a whole lot of trucks going through Brimbank uh carrying contaminated soils, carrying litter from all, litter and waste from all parts of Melbourne to the, to the landfill. So uh and with the recycling crisis on us now and the uncertainty around what's going to go to landfill, we don't know the extent of what's going to happen around this particular site. So it's really important we get these protections in place quickly and that EPA knows what the council thinks on this and is, is willing to work with us. Uh we, we know that EPA is stretched for resources. Uh we We know that this big new landfill with all the additional soil that's going to come in from tunneling and various other places is going to stretch them to the max alongside everything else they do. So we need to be advocating really strongly as part of our, I guess, environmental equity issue that we do get the resources in place. And that's what four is all about, C four, making available the resources essential to regulating and monitoring compliance at Melbourne and the southern hemisphere's largest landfill site in the community's interest are the key words. So that is the reason for my changes. The rest of the motion, I think, has been discussed at some length in briefings and in the special meeting. But I'm sure there are other councillors who want to say things about this as well. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, I commend to councillors.
Will the councillor Congreve want to speak, Madam? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Sir Deputy Mayor. Councillors and Sir Deputy Mayor, I would like to commend councillor Headige's motion. And I do have to say that it was personally with a heavy heart and I'm sure many of you have the same feelings when we had to make the decision that we did on Friday not to appeal the VCAT decision in relation to the tip expansion. As a representative of Deer Park and given my close personal proximity to the Jeremet community and a representative of the wider Brimbank, I can tell you firsthand the impact that that current tip has on our community. For anyone to tell us and this community that that tip doesn't stink is simply not stating the truth. It does stink. It blows litter across the fields and into the community. It attracts a huge number of wildlife, including rats, mice and bird life, who in their thousands fly overhead and migrate to and from the tip every day. Simply look at some of the roofs and the cars in the Jeremet and Deer Park community to see the amount of excrement they've left behind for the community to deal with. I have to say that I wouldn't particularly consider myself an environmental activist, far from it. But I am becoming more and more environmentally conscious. And I'm conscious that it is two thousand and nineteen and we are still putting rubbish in the ground. In fact, we are now planning to build the biggest tip in the southern hemisphere right on our doorstep. I'm conscious of the legacy I'm leaving for my family and for the wider community. I'm conscious that there are better waste practices available and that in particular, in Australia, decisions in relation to waste are being made for financial reasons and they are not for environmental reasons. The sad fact is that simply because of our size in Australia and our readily amount of land that has available, we have available, it is simply cheaper to put rubbish in the ground than to look at options like gasification or some of the best practices that we see in other countries. I got this today, I landed on my desk. It was, despite being a really, really great piece of marketing, this is a frame that was made from recycled polystyrene. It feels like wood, it looks like wood. I didn't even know that we could recycle polystyrene and yet they're making products like this. But we're seeing these sorts of things more and more. They're making roads from glass now, from recycled glass. They're making roads and furniture and all sorts of things from recycled plastic. I'm conscious that we don't discriminate. Everything goes in the ground, including plastics. And recently, who knows what's going to happen if SKM fall over and what that's going to do to our recycling industry. So I'm conscious of that too. I'm also conscious that there is an entire community who stood up, gathered and fought. Sorry, extension of time. Sir Deputy Mayor, can I have an extension, please?
Am I?
Two minutes, please.
Go ahead, go ahead, thank you.
I'm conscious that there's an entire community who stood up, gathered and fought hard over many years against this tip. And right now, I'm sure they're feeling a little bit let down. To all of you, I say, I'm personally sorry. The awful fact is that we are unlikely to win this fight by illegal avenues. And sometimes, in the words of Kenny Rogers, you need to know when to fold them. This council could not, and I could not, justify the hundreds of thousands of dollars it would have cost to take up a fight that we weren't likely to win. I do also want to say thank you to all of the community members who fought this campaign over many, many years to stop the tip and their supporters. This is still a great result. The original plan was for a tip that was double the size, fourteen cells instead of the now seven. Your efforts have been amazing and your community, this council, and I personally thank you for your efforts and offer you and the community this commitment. This council will do everything in its power to make sure that the tip is managed and complies with all of its obligations and regulations, which is what this motion is doing. We will continue to vocally advocate for advanced waste technologies. We will do everything we can to ensure that although the expansion guarantees seven cells, that the alternatives it utilizes and that those cells aren't needed. I also commit that as a council, we will do everything we can to reduce the amount of waste that we put into landfill through the introduction of alternative methods, including FOGO and soft plastics recycling, which is in our plan. Also, you've just heard the issue of environmental equity and that's just getting started. This is just another example. The plan now, as it stands, is that over the next ten years, all of Melbourne Metro's waste will be trucked to the West and put in the ground. We're not the dumping ground of Melbourne's West, we refuse to be. I strongly recommend this report to council and ongoing efforts in relation to this regard. Thank you.
You finished just on time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other comments, councillors? Councillor Tacos?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The state government has chosen the easy path, expansion of the Melbourne Regional Landfill and not embarked on seeing this as an opportunity to escape from the landfill. As the mayor mentioned, there are other opportunities here such as gasification, which is being explored in Laverton as we speak, as an alternative to burying rubbish in the ground and poisoning it for generations to come, as well as producing the toxic side effects like leachate and gas and poisoning our groundwater and rivers for years to come. It's time the state government got out of crisis management and expanding landfills and depending on the SKMs, which are barely coping and not even complying, since China has stopped taking our rubbish and creating dangerous conditions for potential fires, of which we have seen far too many at almost a predictable pattern. Surely our people in the West deserve better. And the Sustainability Fund was developed so that a proper waste management statewide strategy is developed.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. We speak on the amendment all the time, councillors. Thank you, councillor Georgie.
Thank you, Mr Deputy. I do support the amended motion and thank councillor Headige for his foresight on this. I also agree with my other fellow councillors and especially with the mayor councillor Congreve and join her in thanking the community for their fight. It was certainly a very, very big fight and they put up a big one indeed. I do, however, seriously doubt that the emissions, discharge or deposit of waste to the environment can be properly managed. That's supposed to be happening right now and it's not happening. How can you stop odour? How can you measure odour? How do you tell someone that you can't smell something when you can? And that's been at the fore of the fight all along by the residents as well. This is but one aspect to this issue. Pollution to groundwater is another. The fact that the waste industry is in shambles is the main issue. I don't know how many warnings, close shaves and distressed community members are needed to combat the crisis we are facing in the waste industry. Council cannot solve this issue by going to the Supreme Court and throwing behind it thousands and thousands of dollars of ratepayers' money. What we do need here is serious leadership for the crisis that we are facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors? Councillor Long, thank you.
Mr Mayor, the acting mayor, I certainly agree with the recommendation as put forward and the amendment as put forward. And but I'll just concentrate on two things. And I agree with the comments that have been put forward by the other councillors, most definitely, and the examples that have been given by councillor Congreve. But D two, encourage state government action to promote alternative and advanced waste and resource recovery technology. And D four, request the state government to utilise those funds to achieve that are probably something I just want to focus on a little bit. And I see that as being while we've fought the good fight, clearly it wasn't going to go any further. The monitoring needs to go on. However, in terms of the big picture going forward of waste and the conversion of that waste into products and new sunrise industries is something we must start to focus on and redirect our attention to. And we've raised that in the past many times. However, it is something that must increasingly occupy our minds as to how we do things. And as was mentioned about the roadmaking materials, the park benches and other interesting products that can be done with that waste. I think they're the sort of things and the way we put money into promoting those sort of things is very much a case as we have a lot of money and a lot of opportunity. And for those that go to the waste expos and things like that and see all these products that are becoming available and techniques to produce those products and recover those resources in a circular economy is very much the way forward. So again, I'm concentrating on where we go into the future. And I would like to see us take that sort of battle forward and start to look at those new industries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Long. Any other comments for the amendment? Anybody against? None? Then I put it to the vote, councillors, including the amendment included in the report itself. All those in favour? Unanimous to carry. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Let's just find where we're at. Okay, so we're now moving on to item twelve point eight, which is the outcomes of the National General Assembly of the Australian Local Government Association, two thousand and nine. And Mr Hogan, I'll throw to you to introduce this report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For noting only, item twelve point eight reports back to council the activities and outcomes of the National General Assembly of the Australian Local Government Association, attended by a number of councillors and the chief executive officer.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? None? Is there a move or a motion, councillor Tacos?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Is there a second for that item? Councillor Headige? Councillor Tacos, would you like to speak to that item?
Just a few words, Madam Mayor. The two thousand and nineteen Australian Local Government Association's National General Assembly was held in Canberra from the sixteenth to the nineteenth. I had the honour, along with yourself, councillor Headige and our CEO to attend. And it was a great opportunity to learn best practices on a range of local government issues. We also gathered and shared valuable information with other local government leadership roles. And we sought to influence the national members of parliament and other key decision makers. But most importantly, I guess, is that the three fantastic motions that our council put to ALGA focused on key issues of climate change, funding for preschool and kindergarten and reducing gambling harm. Areas that I feel that we are leaders on. While in Canberra also, we had the tremendous opportunity to meet up with the ACT Renewal Authority of Transport for Canberra, which included a site visit and tour on the new operational light rail. Now, learning about this project was probably one of the best aspects of the attending Canberra. It was basically learning and understanding how they developed the project and how long it took and the challenges they faced on the way. But also how they developed precincts, because as we know, Canberra is one of those cities that is growing, just as every other city. And it was amazing to see as we were taken on the light rail to see the growth and see the precincts develop before our eyes. So I really thank them for giving us that opportunity to learn from their project management and maybe take some of those learnings to our own. And would love to have them to actually come and visit and speak to our council. The visits were highly valuable and informative, sharing tried and tested tools which could assist council roles and advocating for the Sunshine Super Hub and Sunshine as a priority precinct. I commend the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. The second I'd like to speak, councillor Headige.
Just to reinforce what councillor Tacos has said, she's covered pretty well everything. I also think that despite us putting forward three particular motions and them being very highly supported, there are a number of other really good motions put forward by other councils. And one of them was that local government be included in the constitution. I noticed in recent times that the deputy prime minister has been advocating strongly around an inclusion of a funding for local government or addition of local government into the constitution as another level of government. So really good to hear that, to see that that sort of movement can come from putting forward a motion. So I think what it does is encourages us to really take on board what might come next to ALGA and to think about the sorts of things we just talked about with the advocacy, with those legacy issues and so on that we think are needed for our community, but how they might be extended more broadly into other communities as well. I also think that the visits to both the Renewal Authority and the transport area of the ACT government were fabulous and that they gave us an insight into what might be in terms of future of M A L and Western Rail Plan and I guess the development of precincts, whether it be Sunshine or St Albans or Sydney or wherever, it gave us a really good template and some fabulous place-based planning and various other opportunities. And I'm sure that there'll be strong connections made between this council and the ACT government around a lot of that because it's really valuable work that's already been done. We need to learn where we can. But we also need to provide feedback to them that we think that we've done that they haven't. So great to see those relationships developing. Let's make sure we develop them further. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headige. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we move on to item twelve point nine, which is Age Friendly City Plan, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two Draft Community Report Card. And I will ask Ms Brackett to please introduce this report.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to see the draft community report card for the age-friendly city plan. The age-friendly city plan provides direction to council to deliver an age-friendly city and the plan is guided by the commitments of the Age Friendly Victoria Declaration, signed in council in two thousand and seventeen and the World Health Organisation Friendly Cities Framework as well. And the declaration commits local governments to work to create age-friendly communities in Victoria.
Thank you, Ms Brackett. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Borg?
I move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Is there a second for that item? Councillor Pham? Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Brimbank Age Friendly City Plan, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one, was endorsed in two thousand and eighteen. Council is committed to an age-friendly community, supporting the rights of older people to make choices about the way they live. In Brimbank, there are over seventeen seniors groups, providing a range of programs and activities for over seven thousand members. Whilst numbers are declining for some groups, other programs such as University of the Third Age, Probus and the Clearall Life Activities Club are recording increases in membership. The Brimbank Active Seniors Group, made up of seniors from diverse cultural backgrounds, has been operating since two thousand and nine. They meet bi-monthly to voice concerns, advocate and lead community consultations. The Brimbank Seniors Forum has been in operation since two thousand and four and acts as an opportunity for representatives of seniors groups to share resources, discuss activities and future plans of organisations and support the efforts of seniors groups within the municipality. The Brimbank Community Register enables residents over fifty years of age and residents with a disability to receive regular phone calls, providing conversation, community updates and welfare checks. The register has three hundred and fifty-three registered clients across forty-six nationalities. This is an important service as almost one-third of the people aged over sixty-five in Brimbank report their English fluency as not well or not at all. This is a much higher rate than metropolitan Melbourne. The introduction of the Commonwealth Home Support Program and the National Disability Insurance Scheme has meant changes to the delivery of aged care services in Brimbank. Council continues to monitor changes to the delivery of aged care services and to assess the impact of these changes on the local services and programs. On the local services and programs. Finally, council in conjunction with the Municipal Association of Victoria. Is monitoring the progress and findings of the Royal Commission into aged care quality and standards. Which is due to be completed by October two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, councillor Borg. The second would like to speak, councillor Pham.
I think age-friendly city plan is such an important plan. Um it's actually a support a lot of senior group that um wipe out the isolation that they. Can um it can happen to them if they just stay home, not joining any activity. Um also with certain senior group that is give them the opportunity to socialize with their own community. Um without requiring that they have to have English to communicate. Um I think I think that's also improving their health situation and all other thing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pham. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Diddy Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh councillors, I urge all of you to uh take note of this important plan. I and a couple of other councillors are right in the middle of it, age-friendly. So I look forward to seeing everything that surrounds it and really, um just to be serious. We do need to ensure that our community are participating and are being socially included. Um our seniors deserve to be happy. And they deserve to be given choices. Um I know that this council will continue to advocate and support for our seniors. And I also look forward to participating in uh the age uh age and disability expo in twenty twenty next year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Diddy Chair. Any further discussion? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad I'm hearing everybody's support in the seniors. Um indeed, um. Look, some years ago, we had a feasibility study in reference to seniors. And it came out to say that those seniors are attending every week to various destinations. It gives them an extra life, between five and seven years extra in life. That's a wonderful thing. And I'm doing that myself. I'm picking up not my year, two years and three and more sometimes. I'm thinking of, yeah. Look, um while I'm saying this, just very short, I'd like to say a very, very big thank you to our drivers. Those drivers, we drive, the driving, those senior citizens, from various destinations, to various centres each each day of the week. It's a wonderful thing. They're very happy people. They look after those seniors in a wonderful way. I see me, I see them every day in my life. And I always wanted to say thank you to them. I found the idea and the chance to say thank you to them tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillors, any, councillor Headich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's another one who's getting down the track of it. Taking a few short steps here and there. Um I guess I also wanted to uh comment, um councillor David mentioned the drivers. But I wanted to mention the carers. I think we have a uh a fabulous community of carers, but carers need a whole lot of support and. I think we as a council are continually thinking about that and what we need to do to support carers. There are lots of lots of older people in um in various forms of health and and wellbeing and ability and disability. And um I guess for me, I I'm I'm hearing stories from people regularly about carers and the need to support them more. I'm also hearing lots of stories about loneliness and the need to get groups together to support older people who are living alone or don't have a lot of family and friends and so on. And are living in lonely circumstances. So I commend the age-friendly cities report. I commend the uh. The report card and I I ask councillors to, as they age themselves, continue to think about what that means for them, but also. Everyone else who lives here and who's coming down the pathway. We need to put really strong mechanisms mechanisms in place, community-based mechanisms that. Keep our community as active and well as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headich. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item uh twelve point ten, which is Disability Action Plan. Two thousand and seventeen to the two thousand and twenty, Draft Community Report Card two thousand and eighteen slash two thousand and nineteen. And Miss Brackett, would you please introduce this report?
Um thank you, Chair. The uh purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the two Disability Action Plan Draft Community Report Card. Now, under the Disability Act two thousand and six, council must ensure the Disability Action Plan is prepared. And the report card provides a report back to council and also the community on the progress of the Disability Action Plan implementation.
Thank you, Miss Brackett. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillors? Councillor Borg?
I'll move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Seconded councillor Trung. And councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um this item falls under the Healthy Brimbank. Um of which councillor Papa Foutio is the uh portfolio councillor and she kindly asked me. To read the disinformation on her behalf. Council continues to deliver strong community programs that educate and inform around the NDIS. And key events that recognize and celebrate disability awareness. Brimbank has a very high rate of people with severe or profound disability. Seven point seven percent of our population and there are eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-three Brimbank residents. Who provide unpaid care. The NDIS is the most significant social reform since Medicare was introduced in the early nineteen seventies. Implementation of the NDIS commenced in October two thousand and eighteen. At the end of March this year, seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventy people in Victoria are currently benefiting. From the NDIS. Four thousand six hundred ninety-eight people are receiving support for the first time. Five thousand eight hundred ninety-five children are being supported by the Early Childhood Early Intervention Program. In two thousand and eighteen, council endorsed the Brimbank Disability Advisory Committee to oversee and guide the implementation. Monitoring and review of the Brimbank Disability Action Plan two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty. Made up of people with a disability, carers and service providers, the meetings are co-chair co-chaired. By myself and Mrs. Pina Hervalles, Chair of the Brimbank Disability Network Group. Funding for the Metro Access Program through building inclusive the communities has been extended until. The um the thirty-first of December. This program helps guide council's work to support people with a disability. Their families and carers. It aims to remove barriers, preventing people with a disability from leading. Happy and fulfilling lives and improves access and inclusion. Council has formally recognized the needs of people with a disability. Through the strategic objectives of the Council Plan two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Trum, would you like to speak as a second?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um it's great to hear is the. The la- a lack of number of how the people with the disability have the support um. And care from the council. But I think it around in the mem- a lot of member in community. Have um. Disability, especially from diversity, they don't know. And or don't understand it what the the service, what is the support from the council. So I think in the action plan, we have how to um promotion is more. Because I know it's a lot of families still trouble uh with the issue of the member. Uh if they have the member in their family have the disability and all disabled and also. Um the barrier of the language and sometimes the culture, they don't want the people to know. If they have the member, um if their family have disabled. So I think we have to promote and how we can support and encourage is more. Um people is know about the servant and in caring time is like education or get a job. Or get them out of where they are. So that is the recommend I am.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillor Tacos, would you like to speak as a second?
Thank you. I'd also like to applaud the council's commitment to people with disability by supporting the Brimbank Disability Net- Network. Which embraces the principles of advocacy, wellbeing, community engagement, access. And has delivered um a raft of excellent projects that are embedded across sports, youth services, leadership programs, disability standards in buildings. Public spaces, hack programs throughout neighbourhood houses, NDIS workshops and excellent cooking programs that empower our most vulnerable. Through um the Kitchen Challenge, which was an award-winning um program. However, Ma- uh Madam Mayor, I do have to say that I'm hearing that there is a strong voice out there that wants us to explore our carers hub. In providing a physical space and support service for those in our community who are providing one of the most. Difficult and complex and exhausting roles uh there is, and that is that of a carer. These are very, there is a very strong need. I feel that these people need to connect and share knowledge and support one another. Whilst we aim to make all of our facilities and spaces disability-friendly, there is still a gap. Or a need where carers can go to to get this help. The NDIS is a complex maze for those who are lucky enough to have strong English skills. Imagine how disempowering it would be for someone seeking some basic support uh from NDIS. From a cold background and with limited English. Um overall though, I do congratulate the Disability Network Committee and DAC for its excellent work and commend this report card. I think their voices are very important and our community is richer for their contribution.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Councillors, any further discussion? Councillor Headich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I support all that's been said for me. Um I guess I stand as a member of the DAC. And uh I also um want to pick up on a point that councillor Tacos just made regarding carers. And the ongoing conversation we're having in this community about a disability hub. Uh we've done a feasibility study, we have a sort of a concept plan for it. And I noted in the newspapers not too far back that there was a conversation going on between um council and the. Uh current uh chair of the Disability Network uh about the needs for a space for carers and. I guess I wanted to uh reinforce the support I think all of us have for that and. The support we have for a disability hub that is multifaceted. Um I guess what I'm looking for though, in future report, report cards and advice back to council. Is some, I guess, um progress reporting on how we're going with implementation of the various aspects of a disability hub. And in particular, what we might be doing around a uh a stronger sports for carers, places and spaces where they can come together and support each other. And not only disability carers but aged carers as well. So I commend the report. I congratulate everyone on all the great work that's going on and. Councillor Borg for chairing of the deck and the um various work that's going on through portfolio and with the offices as well. There's a whole lot of really good work going on behind the scenes. But I think we have a really key issue around carers that we need to focus on a little bit more going forward. Leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headich. Councillors, any further discussion around the report card?
Yes, council. Um uh Madam Mayor, just to endorse what everyone has said, especially around the carers um hub. Um these are very, very important people in our community. They sometimes. Need to be supported a lot more than the people that they're actually caring for. So I'll leave it at that as I think that enough has been said, but I also wish to mention that. It's very important that we do endorse the Easy English Brimbank Disability Plan. With almost half of our people here in Brimbank not being uh having English as their first language. It's very important that the people in our community understand our plan and how they can uh reference our plan to be able to get help out there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Diddy Chair. Councillor Pham?
Um I would like to support everything that was said by fellow councillor, but looking at the background of this. Um Disability Action Plan, uh I can see that uh the the reason we um making up this plan was. To reduce the barrier to a person with disability and promoting inclusion and participation. In the community and all other things. So what I try to say is. I hope that in the future, as Brimbank's um eh an organization would be a champion to. Maybe even employ people with disability to show to all other people as a guidance like, you know. We we have disability but we're not disabled, we can do the thing and I would like us to take the lead on that. Maybe in our library staff or whatsoever, I'm not sure, but that's what I want to see in the future.
Thank you, councillor Pham. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number twelve point eleven, Volunteer Strategy two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two. Draft Community Report Card two thousand and eighteen dash two thousand and nineteen. And uh we'll ask Miss Brackett again to introduce this report.
Thank you. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the Volunteer Strategy two thousand eighteen to twenty-two, um Community Report Card, Attachment One. There's a number of key highlights that have been identified, but particularly noting that council has four hundred and twenty registered volunteers. And the focus of future actions will be on improving volunteer opportunities and supporting the current volunteers in their roles in the community.
Thank you, Miss Brackett. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Borg?
I move the motion as per business paper.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Seconded for that. Councillor Trum and councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Volunteering is recognized as a valuable part of life in Australia. Brimbank Volunteer Strategy was endorsed um in two thousand and eighteen. The strategy has three guiding principles. Effective communication, service excellence and local and regional connections. The contribution of these volunteers is. Uh rather, in Brimbank, we have four hundred twenty registered Brimbank council volunteers. Their contribution is highly valued and acknowledged. Indeed, council holds the annual volunteer rewards and recognition event. Uh council also works in partnership with various community organizations and service providers. One such partnership is with Victoria Police and the Brimbank Community Register Program. And recently, we celebrated the tenth un- anniversary of this program. As we mentioned earlier, um these are, uh the register has three hundred fifty-three registered client. Um clients across forty-six nationalities. I attended the tenth year anniversary celebrations. And it certainly was a great pleasure to see the volunteers meeting for the first time or coming face to face. To some of their clients that that they consult with um through their consultations over the phone. And uh even the clients themselves were so pleased to attend and meet um the these volunteers. And these people do a wonderful job and so do all the other volunteers. And I sincerely um thank the the members of the community who contribute so much of their time. And passion into the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. And councillor Trum, would you like to speak as a seconder of this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's the, with my personal, is very pride to see is the lot of people in our community. Are pre- listed for the volunteer. It um. When I come some of the different community, you see it, um you know, when you see the people. They willing to uh spend their spare time for the community. But we mostly to see it a lot of um people uh. Metus a or um over fifty-five like we mentioned. How can we can support and carry if the young people get involved? And especially is like um some, I think it, other thing if we can carry like. The member, more member in the diversity, especially people new arrive, when they get. A volunteer, so it's a chance and opportunity for them to learn and to get involved. It's a lot of thing for uh the community and they understand it what happened. Or even the law or what around them. I think it the part is the, we see a lot of uh. Uh elderly people, but we not see new people arrive or the young people to get involved. How can we can encourage them? Because I think they love to get involved, but sometimes. They don't know how to start and what they can do if we we can encourage. If we we can encourage like uh we get involved with the member in community and they know who would arrive and encourage them. I think it the part for them to learn and and support for the community too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Trum. Any further discussion on this item? Councilor Tacos?
Um I'd like to echo what was said before, and I think it's a very important point that Councilor Trum said about the young people. Because they're always asking me, uh how do I get involved? I want to help, I want I want to give something. I think we're very lucky in Brimbank that we've got some of the most uh im- uh amazing volunteers. They are the most valued citizens. Their selfless contributions that assist uh everything from planting trees to coordinating our council events. Um some of them we've got to know over the last three years and they've almost become like a part of our, you know, our com-. A very strong Brimbank community here. They are very appreciated. They're indeed people that we are extremely proud of. But with the celebration of the tenth year of the Community Register Programme, I just want to focus on that because. This this service is um reaches out to some of our most vulnerable and isolated people. With a simple call daily to check up on them, just to see how they are. A call that makes a big difference to people's lives. This is a significant, I believe, outreach program that we we should be very, very proud of. Uh which its longevity, I hope, continues for decades to come. As we become more technical, technologically sophisticated. And can now do most things from digital platforms, when we ask for help, everything is operated through computers. A phone call from a caring volunteer provides a human interface that we should not underestimate or undervalue. I believe our council also gives um volunteers the excellent recognition they deserve. Um through training, leadership programs, of which I was lucky enough to participate as a volunteer. As I know other many people on this council have, um and became alumni members of council. So I really feel that it is uh it has helped a lot of people in commu- the community to become community leaders as well. Uh the annual dinner dance is an example of what I have to say is one of the best events that we run. Uh the recognition we give, the looks on the people's faces and the and the feeling that they feel valued and part of our uh. Fabric is is one of the most proudest moments that I I experience uh every year. So I'd like to endorse this report of the draft volunteer strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tacos. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? Councilor Hiddich?
One quick point, Madam Mayor. Um I also uh would like to make a comment around the point that Councilor Trung and Councilor Tacos have. Uh just made als- also regarding uh young people. Um I don't know about everyone else, but uh when I go to clubs and communities and various other things, a lot of people are saying uh. We've got an aging committee, we have a a very, a dearth of young people coming through. Uh we all know, we've all been volunteers somewhere along the line. Uh we go and see uh. Uh young people today, uh young, people with young families and so on, they've got heavy time commitments and the um. The pipeline of volunteers coming through to replace many people in the governance roles of uh various community groups and committees is drying up. And uh on the other hand, I I see us all going to the schools and talking to mayors and. And various other councillors going and talking in the schools about civics and getting involved in your local community volunteering. We see the friends of Corrigan Creek and. You know, um friends of Merribong Valley and others, and the Sydenham Park and all sorts of other places, planting and so on. Lots of volunteer work going on at that primary school and secondary school level. How do we bring it together? How do we create a stronger capability and capacity to um keep our community going in terms of governance and communities? Without them, we 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 can't do what we do. So um encourage and support all the all the volunteers that we have now, but we also need to. Really think about um how we um get the next wave coming through, so that we can pick up. Uh the effort and we can enhance it and we can have a regular flow of um, I guess, community volunteers of all ages. Uh doing all sorts of things. Just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hiddich. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? No, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point twelve, which is Local Government Power Purchasing Agreement. Uh agreement, agreement. Um and Mister Walsh, I'll ask for you to introduce this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh the purpose of this report is for council to consider committing to the purchase of a hundred percent. Of electricity for its large facility, facilities, small facilities and street lights. Through the Local Government Power Purchasing Agreement. The officer recommendation is asking council to commit to the co- collaborative procurement process. Um and to authorize and delegate to the C- CEO the necessary powers to affect, make effect to that decision.
Thank you, Mister Walsh. Councilors, any further, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No, is there a mover? Motion? Councilor Trum? Councilor Trum, would you like to move the motion, please?
Yeah, I would like to move the motion, add it on the paper.
Thank you, Councilor Trum. Is there a seconded for that item?
I'll second it.
Seconded, Councilor Judy Chair. And Councilor Trum, would you like to speak to this item? Are you able to?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um the Local Government Renewable Power Purchase Agreement. Um it said B P A show innovation and the leadership. This is the right example for how council demonstration innovative thinking of project. With meet the mountain outcome and deliver long term benefit. The B B A had been developed together by thirty-nine petition councils and the. Multi-Cable Association of Victoria. Brimbank were one of the key diva of this project. Brimbank is committing to the purchase of one hundred percent of electricity. For the electric city for our building and the street light. The B B A will deliver lower energy costs and rate of fire certainly. With our the commission council security of energy supply. Council bring how reduction strictly in the void. The carbonis- station of its energy contracts eh and action to sufficiently. To reduce the greenhouse emission, the B B A is an opportunity to achieve this. Council had acknowledged the climate emergency and this will help is our transition. Toward a low carbon filter. Our agreement will avoid a rose Victoria. More than one million tons of greenhouse emissions over the ten year period. This is the evil equal to removing over two hundred and fifty thousand car from our role. For the whole year. The comment on the report.
Thank you, Councilor Trum. Councilor Judy Chair, would you like to speak as a seconder?
Yes, um Madam Mayor, um this also falls under my portfolio of innovations, so I'm very, very pleased to be endorsing this power purchase agreement. Uh we will benefit greatly, not only in savings but from the learnings in this power purchase agreement. And it could be extended actually to a lot of other things as well. It could be a group of residents, it could be a group of businesses, could be a whole suburb. Not only for electricity, for gas, lawn mowing, window cleaning and a whole lot of other services. So I think there's a lot to learn from this power purchase agreement. But primarily for us, of course. This agreement is also uh helping council achieve our fifty percent target in reduction of greenhouse emissions by two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Judy Chair. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? No, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to a timely item, which is item twelve point thirteen. Final Draft Reconciliation Action Plan, right off the back of NADOC Week. So uh Council Ho- uh Councilor Hogan, sorry, Mister Hogan, would you mind introducing this report, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm not quite that brave. Council is asked to both consider community submissions received on the Draft Reconciliation Action Plan. Two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two and to adopt the recommended final plan.
Thank you, Mister Hogan. Uh councilors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No, is there a mover? Council Pham?
Uh I move the um report, it is printed on the paper.
Thank you, Council Pham. Seconded? Council Borg? Council Pham, is there a mover? Would you like to speak to this item, please?
The final dra- uh reconciliation action plan, draft, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Is the second reconciliation, reconciliation action plan that guides our step. On our journey along the road to reconciliation with our First Nation peoples. For Brimbank, this journey is began with our statement of commitment in two thousand and twelve. Followed by our first rep in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and seventeen. And now this second rep, uh rep for two thousand and nineteen, now two thousand and twenty-one. This wrapped rep was developed through a reflection on our progress. To date along with an extensive research and consultation process with all stakeholders. Including the local Aboriginal community. The rep rep reflects the outcomes of the consultation. Undertaken and aligns to the three key themes, relationships, respect and opportunities. The rep's rep commits council to a range of actions that will challenge us to be innovative. And ensure that we continue the journey. There are now over four hundred organisations across Australia. With a working reconciliation action plan. Along with the recently endorsed Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Strategy. The rep provides council with a strong foundation from weak to build a comprehensive approach to reconciliation. Therefore, I commend the report to council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Pham. Councilor Borg, would you like to speak as a seconder?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted to have been a part of the journey, working with our Brimbank Aboriginal. And Torres Strait Islander Consultative Committee as chair. And now as co-chair with Councilor Pham to develop the reconciliation action plan two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Council's vision for reconciliation embraces our whole community in the celebration of Aboriginal. And Torres Strait Islander histories and cultures, ensures equitable access to our services and facilities. Confronts prejudice, discrimination and racism. And creates opportunities for the local Aboriginal people and Torres Strait Islander peoples and their elders. To fully participate in our diverse community. Brimbank is lo- located in a region which has a rich physical and cultural Aboriginal heritage. The reconciliation action plan has been developed at the same time as the revised Aboriginal Cultural. Heritage Strategy two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three, which taken together. Form the core of the council's approach to working with the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders. And Islander peoples into the future. Since the development of the first rep in two thousand and thirteen, council established the Brimbank Aboriginal. And Torres Strait Islander Consultative Committee to provide advice on Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander issues. And to provide advice on the ongoing implementation of council's current and future reps. This rep was developed in consultation with the Brimbank Original Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Consultative Committee. Traditional owner groups, local Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community members. As well as other relevant external stakeholders. I am proud to be part of a council progressing our journey along the road to reconciliation with our First Nation peoples.
Thank you, Councilor Borg. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? Councilor Judy Chair?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, it is indeed um a great end to the NADOC week and what a better way to end. Than to actually endorse the final draft reconciliation action plan. We have a long history here in Brimbank of supporting our First Nation peoples. And as councillors, we've also been engaging in cultural awareness briefings to help us better understand this very unique. And special culture and the history. I thank all the submitters um to the plan. And as a council, we we co- we will continue to facilitate the recognition and respect for our First Nations people. In fact, I look forward to yah, now and then as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Judy Chair. Councilors, any further discussion? Councilor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I also just wanted to add a couple of quick comments. Um great to see the the rep coming forward. I had the pleasure of reading Dark In you on the plane over and back to holidays just recently and uh. It's a um, it's a fascinating insight into history and uh. And I guess the achievements of the Aboriginal community over tens of thousands of years in this country. And I think the relationships, respect and opportunities framework that we have in front of us um is really, uh I guess. A place where we can uh do our thing locally. And for me, uh I just wanted to focus quickly on the respect. Uh part of this, uh when we were at the Elga Conference uh recently, the, there was a a number of presentations. From Aboriginal community people on uh different initiatives that are going on in their communities. One of them I wanted to focus on was the. First Nations Language uh initiative that's been around for a while, but um so important that uh. There is an understanding in community of the 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 local indigenous community language and and how it fits with. Uh our particular uh community. Uh I see in Warrnambool of recent times, they've just put up all their signs entering. Into Warrnambool and uh around town, a number of signs around town, four or five signs around town. That have their traditional uh place names on them, but also the Aboriginal place names and things like that help to move things along. And to get reconciliation underway, a slow, respectful process, but uh one that we all should be considering. I also noted in going to the consultations uh uh in the opportunity section that the, that item thirteen. Uh participate in the process of development of an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community hub or gathering, gathering place. Um in our community, I think this is a really good one. We have so many opportunities. We have wonderful uh. Parks, Brimbank Park and Horsey Bend and so on that provide a place. Uh we don't have a space at the moment and we also need to do some work around uh, I guess, the um. Organisation that might take this forward, Aboriginal controlled organisation that might take this forward, but there's a lot of work in there, a lot of conversations to go on. And a lot of discussion, but I think those two things in particular are important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hiddich. Any further discussion on this item, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point fourteen, which is Waste Recycling and Litter Strategy. Two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-eight, Draft Community Report Card, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. And Draft Residential Waste Strategies Policy, two thousand and nineteen. We need someone to look at these titles. Um I'll throw it over to Mister Whiteside to introduce the report.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh council adopted the Waste and Recycling and Litter Strategy two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-eight in May. Last year. The strategy outlines a number of actions over the next ten years that will move, move council closer to the aspirational goal. Of achieving zero waste to landfill. The actions include expanded recycling services, initiative to reduce the dumping of rubbish. And focus on helping the community avoid waste. A draft re- uh Community Report Card for the eighteen, nineteen funding year has been prepared. To highlight the achievements over the last year. A draft residential waste services policy has also been prepared for council's consideration. Uh both items are considered for endorsement and adoption respectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Whiteside. Councilors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No, is there a motion, councillors? Councilor Tacos?
Papers, thank you.
Thank you. Putting this per business papers, seconded by Council Lancashire. Councilor Tacos, would you like to speak to this item?
Certainly.
Madam Mayor, I applaud this council's strategy and Neil Whiteside's team ambitious goal. Of achieving zero waste to landfill through a suite of actions, which is in its report card. When the state, um when we see the state managing uh waste via a crisis management approach. Brimbank is bucking that approach and trend by incorporating a a number of things. Education, mitigation, prevention, compliance and sustainability. Um the education programs, um I'm proud to say, are fantastic, like the Brimbank Gems. And appointing a waste education officer, introducing a home waste composting program. So this gets to the heart of educating. Educating a future generation where we're working in the prevention area. Uh right through to illegal dumping uh campaigns, the Stop the Rubbish campaign, as well as now adopting its uh. Uh part, part of our silver uh advocacy campaign, which is lobbying for a parliamentary inquiry into the recycling. And waste management industry and the introduction of container deposit legislation as well. Uh we will continue to advocate in our advocacy portfolio for those changes. But we also, in this council on the ground, are implementing those preventative strategies and fantastic su- suite of um. Uh education ideas to support a much more sustainable way to eliminate our waste and rubbish. I congratulate Neil Whiteside and his team for their hard work and support this innovative policy.
Thank you, Councilor Tacos. And would the second like to speak? Council Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I certainly would. Um during the last week, I had the opportunity to go to the Viola Plant um. For uh green waste and look at their uh, that processing system of the green waste, which is uh. Uh quite an amazing facility and assigned for the future. I'd been there a year earlier.
I'd been there a year earlier and just in that year alone, they've completely changed the way they process their contaminants, which is referred to in this report, where it'd be just dumped out on the ground and, and, and people would go over it, picking bits and pieces out to a, a process where it goes through a, um, uh, a ramp system, uh, and with a, a, an increased level of, um, computerisation and processing automation. Um, in the report there, it refers to, uh, reducing recycling contamination down from twenty-six to thirteen percent. And I think the council staff and, uh, uh, Mr Whiteside need to be totally complimented on that. Um, that's a fantastic effort to, uh, to achieve that. And, and just as an example, at the green waste facility, the Viola Green Waste, um, if batches are too heavily contaminated, then the entire batch just goes to the tip. So in terms of getting that level of contamination down in our waste areas, it is very important to get a better result out of it. Uh, so the effort that's been put in there, congratulations and well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Lancashire. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Council Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, uh, would like to ask something is the, on this is the first I would like, uh, again, thank you to the sustainability team and all the director is the Kevin Walsh and Neil Boy. It's for all the hard work from the team on the education awareness programme for the community, litter and dumping the rubbish. But I also would like to mention and want to see is the more pop-up right to, uh, reshiling because I think that's one really successful and it's been a lot of member in the community is the one we do have again. Uh, this one, but not only in Sunshine, but we can move in a different area for, um, more member in the community, it easy to, um, have the public right through. So I just would like to add.
Thank you, Council Trum. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point fifteen, which is Draft Graffiti Prevention and Management Policy, two thousand and nineteen. And ask Mr Hogan to please introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report attaches a policy which aims to coordinate a reduction of the incidence of unauthorised graffiti within Brimbank and work towards enhancing the appearance, character and experience of public places. I commend the policy to council for adoption.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of a motion, councillors? Council Fan? Would you move the motion, please?
I'd like to move the motion, it is printed on the paper.
Thank you, Council Fan. Uh, is there a seconded for this item? Council Alan? And, uh, Council Fan, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thanks. Um, through the past few year, uh, it's so great to see that council taking action on reducing the graffiti and putting heaps more of, uh, public art throughout, um, Brimbank. Um, I think that's also a, a key model and also the encouragement for, um, our community, especially our young people, you know, you can participate in public art, but in the right way, not just, you know, doing tacking and destroying, um, public, um, um, facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fan. Council Alan, have any?
No speaking.
Um, any further discussion on this item, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point sixteen, which is Proposal to Renew Lease Agreement at forty-eight Stadium Drive Ca- uh, Kewal Park, the Green Centre. Mr Whiteside, would you like to introduce this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider a proposal uh, to renew a lease agreement with the Green Centre for a period of five years, uh, at council's property at forty-eight Stadium Drive, Kewal Park, in accordance with the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, we will, the report recommendation details a number of requirements, uh, including a proposal to undertake a statutory consultation process on the proposal and the enabling written submissions to be received and the establishment of a Hearing of Submissions Committee to hear from any submitters who indicate they would like to be heard. Uh, please note the establishment of a Hearing of Submissions Committee would require the nomination of councillors.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? Council Fan?
Uh, just a question, uh, I see the bit of information here, but not really clear about what they're doing at the site, so can, uh, you provide answers? Thanks.
Mr Whiteside?
Uh, yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, so the Green Centre, uh, which has been in operation for about twenty-five years, uh, out at Kewal Park, just next to council's operations centre, is a privately run green waste processing site. So they take green waste material, uh, from the private, uh, private sector and, uh, turn that and use it to turn it into organic material for soil enhancing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any further discuss- uh, questions, points of clarification on this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors?
I'll move the motion, Ma- uh, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, and appoint councillor Tarkos as chair, councillor Borg and com- and myself as members to the Hearing of Submissions Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judy Chair. Is there a seconded for this item? Councillor Hiddich? Uh, Council Judy Chair, would you like to speak to this item?
Uh, no, Madam, yes. I look forward to hearing any, any submissions and also to then making that decision later on in the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judy Chair. Councillor Hiddich, no discussion? Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, uh, we're moving on to item at twelve point seventeen. I wonder, councillors, if it would be, um, appropriate to move an en bloc motion for twelve point seventeen through to twelve point nineteen? Is there a lot?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Judy Chair is moving these en bloc, seconded by Council Lancashire. Um, any questions or points of clarification in any of these before we move? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. Carried. All of those have been moved on blanc. Okay, that is the end of the officer reports this evening. So we move on to item thirteen, which is notices of motion and there are no notices of motion this evening. Item number fourteen is rescission motions. There are no rescission motions this evening. Item number fifteen is urgent business. And CEO, is there any urgent business this evening? CEO has advised there is no urgent business this evening. So we will move on to item sixteen, which is confidential business. And there is no confidential business for tonight's meeting. So that draws us to a close and I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening and your interest in tonight's meeting. And I declare this meeting closed at nine seventeen P M. Thank you.